The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Councilmember Connie.
President.
Rodriguez.
President.
Strong.
Mayor.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Mayor. Before we begin, I want to report out and let the public know we had a closed session, meeting of the council on the 22nd of May, and the object matter was that we had a local church indicate that they were going to hold services at that point in violation of local health order. We met to discuss as to what our action would be, and the vote was four to one to send a letter requesting that they not do so. Since that time, things have kind of changed. The governor issued new rules that basically left it up to our local health officer, who I've been told that tomorrow will issue a new health order that will align with the governor's order, and I believe it's capacity of 25%. I believe the way the governor said, there's no more than 25% capacity, or 100 people, whichever is smaller. I did follow up with the pastor in question, Pastor Jim Semenich from the Cavalry Baptist Church, and I spoke with him today, and he was well aware of the governor's order, and I believe several ministers and religious leaders spoke with the health officer yesterday, and he felt that he could accommodate the health orders where they were presented, whether it be social distancing, there'd be masks, et cetera, and that he felt that they could comply with that. So, one of our closed session items had to do with this, and now it won't be necessary to me regarding that. So, by way of reporting out and explaining, I wanted to start off the meeting by explaining that. Now, I'll begin. Due to the provisions of the governor's executive orders then, 2520, we suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act, and the order of the health officer in the county of Mendocino to shelter in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19, the city council members will be participating by teleconference in the meeting of May 27, 2020. Public communication. Item two. The council let loose participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Text aside matters and avoid repetition whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter. The mayor may request that his spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action shall be taken as this was not agendized. And before I open it up to public comment, I just want to remind everybody that if you're not speaking, please mute your line, because it does cause horrible feedback. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please state your name. Okay. Hearing. No public communication. Item three. Public matters. Nothing listed. And item four. Enactment of ordinances. Consideration and possible adoption of an urgency ordinance of the city of Willard, city council adopting administrative penalties for violation of county health officer orders pertaining to the COVID-19 pandemic. Would this be Jim presenting? Will this be Jim presenting? Or will this be Stephanie?
This is going to be Jim presenting.
Okay. All right, Jim, take it away.
Jim?
Hi. I was muted. I prepared a draft of an urgency ordinance for your consideration, which if adopted, would give us a remedy of issuing administrative citations to persons who violate the county health officer's orders. And as you know, ordinances generally require a process of reading them, first reading followed by a second reading and a different meeting, and then they become effective 30 days after that second meeting where they're adopted. In the case of an urgency ordinance, however, there's no requirement for two readings, and there's no 30-day delay. It takes effect immediately. So, an urgency ordinance must be approved by a four-fifth vote of the city council, and if that happens, it takes place immediately, and it's also required that the urgency ordinance have recitation of why it's urgent. And so, I distributed yesterday a draft urgency ordinance, and it was modeled after the Fort Bragg, the city of Fort Bragg urgency ordinance on the same topic relating to the pandemic that the city of Fort Bragg adopted a couple of weeks ago. And the ordinance that the city of Fort Bragg adopted was largely similar to a urgency ordinance passed by the county Mendocino Board of Supervisors last month. And there's a couple of things that are different in our ordinance than in Fort Bragg. In ours, at the council's direction, we wanted to address mass gatherings, whether it be a parade, a church, a concert, a festival, something involving a significant number of people, because apparently the virus spreads in those circumstances, and there have been a lot of reports about people being infected with a virus who attended a church service, for example, and participated in singing, that sort of thing. And so, the county's ordinance and the city of Fort Bragg's ordinance only talked about corporate violators, commercial violators, excuse me, and non-commercial violators. And so, I've added a third category that relates to mass gatherings, and there's a different fine structure. The county of Mendocino, they provide that commercial violators can be fined up to $10,000, depending on the circumstances, or a much lower rate. And I've provided that same number for mass gatherings. I think the mass gatherings are the most dangerous type of event in trying to curb the flow of spread of the virus. And so, I believe that what you received has a blank, and we need to fill in a blank about just how many people constitute a mass gathering. And I think Stephanie was going to speak with the county health officer and make a recommendation about that.
Stephanie, do you have something?
I'm sorry. I was muted. What the health officer was saying was that there are going to be new rules coming out tomorrow, and mass gatherings, I believe, are... Let me look at my notes. Anything over 12 is not allowed. However, they are going to be allowing gatherings of up to 100 for church services and for protests. And anything over that, no matter what, and those are considered mass gatherings. So, any gathering of any size is not allowed other than a family-oriented bubble or a child's bubble. So, a definition of a mass gathering is really any gathering over 12, from my understanding. Anything over 100, but there are certain qualifications that will allow gatherings of up to 100 people. Anything over 100 people is an illegal mass gathering.
And so, for example, the churches are now allowed to have 25 persons, which, and that apparently is not a mass gathering. In our definition, under item C, mass gatherings is defined, and it starts out by saying, a mass gathering is an activity that is in violation of county health officer's COVID-19 order and involves the attendance of X number of people. So, if we put in the number 12, that wouldn't apply to churches, because that wouldn't be a violation of the order. But Stephanie, were you recommending the number 12?
Well, it may not be. So, what the governor's order said, and what the new health order is going to mimic, says that you can have either 25% of whatever the fire marshal allows for a particular building, or 100 people, whichever is less. So, theoretically, it could actually be less than 12. If you have a church service where only 50 people, or only, let's say, 30 people sit in the building, you can only do 25% of that. So, that's only, you know, seven people. So, anything over that would be an illegal gathering. So, any gathering, what the county health order is, the definition of mass gathering is any gathering of any size is not allowed. So, I'm guessing that perhaps what's appropriate is to just define it as whatever is not allowed under the order, because what is allowed under the order are these, you can do up to 100 people if it's outside, and if it's for protest purposes, but you still have to do social distancing and masks. And so, if you are in a group of 100 doing a protest gathering, and you don't have masks, and you're not social distancing, that would also be an illegal mass gathering.
So, why don't we just change the first sentence of that definition, item C, of the definition of mass gatherings, to put a period after COVID-19 order, period, and take out the reference to the number of people?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Could I ask a quick question of Jim?
Yes.
How would this be impacted if, say, the governor next week, because he's already talked about moving into phase three fairly quickly, with all that Disneyland and other theme parks are talking about opening, which is essentially mass gatherings. If we pass something that says that mass gatherings are a violation, and then we find out that next week, mass gatherings are no longer a violation, do we then have to amend this particular ordinance again?
Well, no. If we say that a mass gathering means an activity, whether non-commercial or commercial, that is in violation of county health officer's COVID-19 orders and involves the attendance of persons, period, I assume that the governor changes his order. Likewise, the county health officer will change hers. And so, what's prohibited today, in the future, will be allowed, and we're only saying that mass gatherings are something that is disallowed and is violation of the health officer's order. So, those health officer orders will change over time. They'll either get more severe, or they get loosened, and in harmony with the governor's orders. So, I don't think we... If we phrase this correctly, we don't have to come back and amend this. We can just tie it to the health officer's orders.
Okay. I get it. So, it isn't necessarily the mass gathering that is the definition. It's really a mass gathering that's in defiance of the county orders. I got that.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, this is Jerry. Would we want to add some important language that says, you know, health officer orders or where allowed by law, you know, kind of something at the end of it? Or is that too confusing?
Well, what I was suggesting is that we say that we tie mass gatherings to situations that are in violation of the order, rather than saying what is allowed.
So, you're... Mrs. Stephanie, I'm not aware of any laws that are in parallel to the health officer's order. Right now, we only are looking at that as a city, is that is what we have to obey, and there aren't any other sort of directives that we fall under. For example, schools fall under a different directive directly from the governor and are not subject to the county health orders, and we don't enforce anything regarding schools. So, I think that's the only thing we're looking at.
Okay. No, I just wanted to give us some more language, but that's fine.
So, I would suggest that that first sentence be amended to read, "Mass gatherings means an activity, whether non-commercial or commercial, that is in violation of the county health officer's COVID-19 order and involves the attendance of persons at gatherings or events," period. And then we get that second sentence gives examples.
Mayor Gonzalez, when is appropriate? I'd like to comment about the ordinance just in general, not that specific item.
Jim, are you done presenting, and then I'll let each councilman...
Yes, I am. I'll answer questions if anyone has any.
So, I'll start off with Sabrina. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to give some feedback that I've gotten from other people, and wanted to share it, and that was that a lot of the information that's been put out in regards to what the rules and regulations are now, are put on a website for the county, and then they're distributed pretty widely on social media. And a lot of people that I've been speaking to, if they don't use Facebook, or they're not Googling on the daily for the information, they're not finding, they're not aware of the constant happenings or evolving. And one business owner that I had talked to earlier this week made a good point that she had a, for example, the health department came by to do an inspection. Nobody left her with any literature. There's been no information about what she should and shouldn't do. So, this particular business owner, for example, thought that she was in compliance, but upon visiting her business, it was obvious to me that she wasn't in compliance. Another business owner that I came upon last week needed literature or information in Spanish. And I know that the Fort Bragg city manager in a meeting last week had talked about how they're doing a lot of outreach from the city level to try and connect with business owners and nonprofits and entities, and distributing materials in Spanish and English, as well as just trying to reach out a little each day. I'm not sure what their chamber is doing over there. But anyway, it just, I thought it was worth mentioning that if we're putting something like this in place, I think that the county should, to everybody who has a business license, either the county, if you're outside the city limits, or the city, if you're inside the city limits, should distribute something to let people know that the conditions of your business license have changed, or if you're a church, that conditions have changed. I know it's a little challenging, because it's always evolving, but my concern in passing any kind of penalty is that I wonder if we, the decision-makers, are doing due diligence to inform the public of the changes? Are we just expecting them to get it from the media outlets for so on and so forth? So, I just wanted to share that perspective.
I think that's a good point that you raised, and education is very important, and we do need to let people know what is in violation. One of the provisions in this draft ordinance is that the enforcement officer can, instead of issuing a monetary citation, can issue a notice of violation that says, what's going on here is a violation, and you've got 24 hours to change it. And so, hopefully, you know, if the enforcement officer finds someone out of compliance, he or she explains what's needed to be in compliance, and perhaps they voluntarily comply, or they're issued a notice of violation and given an opportunity to comply.
Well, I like that idea. So, Greta, your turn.
So, I really like what you just said, Jim, and that dovetails with a conversation that I had with Chief Allen last week, wherein he discussed that his preference is for education to anybody who might be violating the health order. He preferred that over any kind of issuing of a citation or certainly arrest. My question is, if we're going to, if we're all in agreement that giving our police department latitude to educate rather than penalize, I wonder why we're rushing an ordinance to give us the opportunity to penalize, especially in light of the fact that the situation is so rapidly evolving, and what seemed a desperate issue last week is now largely resolved by the governor's new information. So, I just, I wonder why we feel so compelled to have this option in our back pocket to issue citations, if that isn't necessarily something that we really even want to do?
That's a good point, too. And I would say, Greta, that we really aren't rushing. We're actually kind of behind the times that we're other cities and the county did this weeks ago. And I think it's a preventative tool. We don't know what's going to come down the road, and persons might want to have a parade or festivals or something, and if we wait until that happens, it's too late. And so, I think if we adopt this urgency ordinance, we'll have a tool, should the emergency arise, to enforce it.
So, Jim, my question for you regarding what Greta said. I know she mentioned the police department, but under this order, it'd be an administrative violation. Is that correct? So, it would fall under a code enforcement officer. Is that correct?
That's right. This is an alternative to a criminal citation.
So, normally, what happens, kind of, my understanding, and I don't think Davey's in the room, but if he is, he could chime in, that when you go visit somebody, unless you're doing something flagrantly out there, that if somebody built a step that isn't quite right, they're called to fix it, and they come back and re-inspect. Is that usually the process?
Yeah, that's correct. This is Davey, building inspector. That's correct, Jerry. We give pretty good latitude. You know, we give notice to fix before we give citations. Even for those code enforcement things, we give a notice of correction before we do any citation.
Well, I've took my experience in the past, that you guys go out, talk to them, et cetera, and then, given your building code, you kind of save that for, in the end, when you have some violation, when they're just not paying attention or doing it intentionally. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, we basically give them the option to comply by themselves, and it usually comes with some sort of time constraint, depending on the issue. But usually, you know, people self-correct, and that's what we strive to do. And then, the only reason you have the citation is there are some people that choose not to do what you want, you know, what needs to be done, and not comply with our codes. And you need to have some sort of action, otherwise, there's nothing to stop them.
Davey, and I know you've run into this in the past, if there's a language barrier to stop somebody to help you communicate with the individual?
Yeah. It's usually rare. There's usually always someone in the household that will translate. If not, we used to have someone on a briefcase that translated for me. I haven't run into that issue in months. But if I do, there's usually someone in the household that can translate for them.
And obviously, it does take away from what Sabrina said. I mean, we, as a city, need to do a better job of getting out there, always. I mean, I think that's constant. Any organization needs to do that. All right. Greta, were you done? Otherwise, I'm going to move to Madge.
I'm still stewing on this, so if you could come back to me when others have had a chance, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Madge?
Can you hear me now? Yes. Okay. So, I never know whether I'm mute is on or not. So, yeah, I appreciated the responses. I think it's very important that there be education, that there be, if possible, and it's a timely way that we have the guidelines in Spanish as well as in English, so that people know what the current rules are, and they are changing pretty rapidly. So, that's a fairly daunting task, just to try to keep up with it. I don't generally do anything, or very, very little, on social media, but I feel like I'm quite current by listening to the radio and reading the newspapers. So, if you speak English well enough, there's quite a bit of information out there. And I think it's really also very important and appropriate that our code enforcement and our police talk to people, explain, educate, ask for voluntary compliance, and that that's going to cover, you know, 95% of what we need, and maybe 100%. That's what we choose for. So, I just, I think that it is important that we have in place an ordinance that backs that up if we need it, and if, you know, not wait until the situation arises. In the same way that the rules changing, that the guidelines coming from the public health department, so is the virus, and what is possible in our community could change rapidly, and we might need to be stricter and actually close things down again if we have a dire situation. And I just, you know, obviously, we all know that that's happened in other places, and I really want us to be prepared for those contingencies, and hopefully, we are on the positive side of that and not having to deal with a public health emergency. But I think having this tool is important. Two comments about the wording of the ordinance. One, and very simple, is that on page four at the top, where the mass gathering, you have two headings that both say "C," so numbering or lettering those paragraphs, so that there's not two of them that say "C." And then, the other one that I was a little bothered by, the "whereas" is, you know, talks about all the different actions that have been taken by different governmental entities, but then the last "whereas" is very specific to places of worship, and it isn't sort of similar. There's no similar wording for all of the other activities that fall into the same urgency ordinance that also present potential public health challenges and violations. It seems like that particular "whereas" is very specific to the places of worship, but, you know, we also know that people could be exposed by, you know, going to bars or going to restaurants if they're not taking all the precautions. So, I just wonder about making that a little more even-handed, and that the "whereas" should include the fact that the reason we're all doing this is because the spread of this virus presents a broad public health threat that requires everybody to take precautions and to limit the exposure that the community faces. So, that's...
That's a very good point. When I wrote that paragraph yesterday, I was concerned, I think the council was concerned, about the church that said that they're going to open their doors on the 31st. So, that was really written regarding that threat that existed, in view of the changes that have happened just today. If we could take that entire paragraph out, our ordinance does address mass gatherings, and we don't have to have anything specific to this. You're absolutely right.
And also, that could change. I mean, like, next week, they could say, well, 25% wasn't good enough. Let's make it 20%. Or, you know, there's all sorts of little tinkings that could happen. Or, they could say, well, now things are looking really good. Let's go up to 35%. So, rather than write that into the ordinance, I think the fact that we're tying this to the public health orders, which change based on the actual conditions, that would address that concern that I have. And I also just wanted to say that the county public health directives don't necessarily follow verbatim what the state does. If we were to have different conditions in our county that require, or, you know... If we were to have, uh, different conditions in our county that require or, you know, that, that meant we wanted to take more precautions, we can be stricter. We can't be any less strict. So, it's better to make it tied to the county rather than to the state.
Okay. I, I think we should just eliminate that last recital.
Okay, great. The whereas, yeah.
Right.
Thank you, Madge. Good catch. Alert!
Everything has been, had that I've thought about. Thank you.
Okay, going back to, uh, Greta.
This is a really hard one for me. I, I'm very sensitive to the city's, um, city staff's desire to have something in place to actually give our code enforcement officers some teeth. Um, but I'm also very concerned about being in the business of penalizing people who are otherwise law-abiding citizens in an extraordinary time. And this is something that I've been thinking about a lot in the last several weeks, not just in the lead-up to this particular urgency ordinance. I, I don't feel like there's a good answer here and I understand the desire to keep the community safe. I understand the desire to give our code enforcement officer backup. I really struggle with whether this is the right direction and I'm struggling with understanding if the other cities who have already done this are now wondering if their ordinances are too strict or, um, are, are no longer valid because of the way things are changing. Um, I just feel like if I had two more weeks to think about this and to talk with more members of the community, I would have a stronger sense of what the right call is. Um, I, I don't, I'm really struggling with this one. And so far, the arguments that I'm hearing, while, while good, aren't enough to totally push me over the edge to say, "Yes, you know, let's go for this right now."
Okay, thank you. You know, I'll, I'll just finish off with the comments I've received from folks are, a lot of them are workers and they, they have had folks kind of grumble about wearing masks. Well, people don't, they say. And, uh, obviously, nobody's happy about having to wear a mask. Uh, and, uh, I, I worry about what's happened in other communities, you know, with, it's resulted in violence, et cetera. And it was up to, like in one community, a gentleman in Walmart was hurt because he tried to enforce the orders for the business, et cetera. So, I, I kinda wanna give it to folks some backup there so that they don't have to be the bad guys in a sense. I mean, I, I guess I've warned that in the past where I told people, "Look, lots of this and this." And I think that's where I'm leaning there. Uh, but I guess the question for Jim, if we put this off for another two weeks, where, how does this set? Obviously, we could have something that erupts between now and then. Um, I guess your thoughts?
Uh, that's a, that's a possibility. You could put this off for two weeks. We just don't know what's gonna happen in these next two weeks. Um, I understand, uh, Greta's concerns and, um, I just think it's important the city have this, this, uh, tool in the toolbox to deal with things that would, that may arise that we're not even aware of today. And, um, especially in the context of the mass gatherings, I'm concerned that a group of a hundred or more people, uh, will gather for some, some thing that they plan to do and they'll learn about it with very, very little time ahead or maybe not, with, maybe, uh, learn about it after the fact. And, um, I just think that this is a, a good, a good thing to have just in case. And, uh, it, it also takes the four fifth vote. And so, if, uh, if we don't have four votes tonight, it's not gonna pass.
Can I, can I say something Jerry? Hello? I, I so appreciate those comments Jim and I really do respect the effort that's gone into drafting this and I, I am not taking this decision at all lightly. I, I wonder if so, having a penalty on the books is gonna keep people who wanna have a mass gathering from mass gathering. And I don't think that any of our laws work to stop people just because they're merely there. I think people make the right choices because they've been raised correctly, because they believe in their community, because they share the community values. And at this point right now, with how divisive this thing has become, I don't know that we have that buy-in from the full community. And I'm very concerned about putting out, uh, an ordinance that says we're gonna penalize folks if folks are gonna do what they're gonna do. And then that puts us in a very weak position with or without the ordinance.
So, who wanted to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Suprema, I can wait.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yes. Okay. Okay. I, I just wanted to say that I, I too respect and understand. I'm concerned about, uh, law enforcement being the ones to educate. And I feel like at this time, as I stated before, that I couldn't support this because I don't feel like we've done our part as a city to educate or to reach out. If I was reassured that we had done our due diligence to educate, then I would feel better about supporting something. But until we can show, just as, you know, we had to demonstrate to the state of California that we could, you know, fulfill the attestation requirements, I feel like as a city, we should fulfill some requirements to make sure that our community is aware of, of what, what's expected of them and what the potential consequences are.
So, I'll, I'll just kinda, 'cause I, I could call for a vote but I kinda think I know where it may end up at. Uh, would, uh, Jim, would we need a, a motion to hold this over for the next meeting?
Uh, yes.
Would it be possible if this vote doesn't, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
If, if, would it be possible if we don't hold this vote tonight and the, in the upcoming two weeks, something horrible happens and we get wind that there's going to be major, um, uh, explosion of cases or a, a large gathering? Would it then be possible to have a special meeting and look again at an urgency ordinance that isn't going to require the two readings, et cetera, et cetera? I mean, do we have room within two weeks if we hold this off to come back in an emergency?
Yes. Okay. Yes, you have. Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If we don't proceed tonight, yeah, if we don't proceed tonight or if we proceed and the motion fails, there's nothing to prevent you from, from coming back and having a special meeting tomorrow, the next day, ten, ten days from now. Uh, consider the same motion, same ordinance.
This is Madge. Can I comment? What, uh, oh, yeah. Um, I, I feel a certain urgency to have something on the books but I also hear the, you know, reluctance of two of the council members. And so, um, especially just given that we could have a, a special meeting called at any, you know, short notice. Uh, if we need to, have reassured me that, um, if we don't take a vote tonight, we, that option is still available. Um, I, and I do think there is a certain advantage in cleaning up the wording a little bit, getting it out to the public via social media and the regular media and personal contacts and all that. Um, as to why we're doing this and as to the fact that this is sort of the last resort kind of, uh, backup to the public education and the voluntary compliance on which we are really focusing and trying to, to avoid any enforcement actions and any punishment. Um, it's only an important thing to have if somebody is really, um, sort of frequently saying, "Well, I know what your rules are and I don't give a damn." Uh, it's important to have some kind of consequence. But it, I, I think given what I'm hearing, um, postponing the vote on this and, um, if we don't have an emergency in the next two weeks, just bringing it back in two weeks is okay with me.
I think that would be fine.
All right. So, Jim, you, do we need a motion to hold it over then? Or do we?
No, you, you can but we also could just, uh, this could, this could, there's not gonna be a motion on it.
Yeah. So...
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes.
Are you gonna call for public comment?
I will in a minute.
Okay. Thank you.
I had, I had one other comment. Hello? This is Madge. Yeah, the other comment was simply, um, it was kind of the confusion that we had about the definition of, of, um, mass meetings, um, or gatherings. Is that, if there's a, a way to have, to have non-compliant mass gatherings or those that da-da-da-da-da, instead of just, it, it makes it sound like all mass gatherings are subject to this penalty, uh, whereas it's not. Uh, so, if that could be, maybe just the language of that could be cleared up, that it's, it's the non-compliant, um, gatherings that were.
Okay, that's a good point.
I guess at this point, before I give it up to the public, anybody else from the council wanna speak? Otherwise, I will open it up to the public.
Uh, this is Greta. I just would like to say I really appreciate everyone's work on this so far and, and I am not in any way trying to, um, this, the effort that's been put into place. I just personally need a little bit more time to chew on this and get public input.
All right. Last caller up here, if not, at this point, I'll open it up to the public. If anybody, members of the public would like to speak to this. Next, say your name.
Hi. This is Rose Macy.
This is who?
Rose Macy.
Oh, I, Rose? Go ahead.
Hi. Um, yeah, I, I, I think it'd be good. I, I like what Greta said. I think it's important, um, to make it clear to all the businesses. They're already having a hard time weathering through this and to get hit with penalties might be destructive overall. Um, and also, the wording may be, you know, the, uh, Willits City Council adopting administrative penalties. Maybe there could be something added like adopting educational and administrative, then administrative penalties rather than right away giving out penalties. And because of all the wording and people unsure about, you know, whether we wanna go through with this ordinance and the ability to, um, have a meeting, uh, if you need it to, if there was something that came up and you had to have a meeting to pass the ordinance, it would be best left on the table until, you know, a couple of weeks after we see what's happening in the state and in the county. That's it. That's all I have to say.
All right. You guys, Rose, can anybody else in the public speak?
Judy, do you hear me?
Hi, say your name.
Mrs. Marcy from Willits Frontier Day.
Hi, Marcy.
Hi, um, we are listening in because, um, we are well aware and so is Sabrina and Greta and several other. You have been made of a, a parade that is being planned. It is all over social media. There was a letter sent to you folks, a letter sent to us, which we sent to you guys a lender. And, um, so that is a mass gathering. How, I mean, we sent you guys and canceled our event, which we did not wanna do, but we did for the city. And, um, how is that going to be handled? Because if it is a parade, then Frontier Day should have had their parade.
Okay, Marcy, we're, we're discussing this in the sense that, uh, so we, I can't discuss something that's cut agenda, but at this point, we're not discussing a parade. We're discussing the context of this order. So... But thank you for, and if, if you can get the word out as to what we're doing, that would be important too. That the idea is we're trying to give ourselves a tool for those folks that, uh, I guess don't wanna follow directions. And that's the purpose of this. Not to go out and penalize people but to give us a tool. All right?
Okay.
All right. Uh, anybody else that would like to speak on this? Next, say your name. Okay, I guess I'll close. Public comment, bring it back up to us, Jim. And I, I think Jim, we, we have consensus that some folks would do a little more crime. I guess I would punish those of you, I, I, I apologize in that I don't do Facebook. I found it to be rather vicious in the past and but I'm sure that there are some good folks on there. But, uh, you guys that do social media can get the word out that what we're trying to accomplish. I don't think, I wanna open up our town for, for business in the safest, the quickest way. And I appreciate how our health officer is, um, I guess accommodated. She could've gone stricter. Some places they have. But she's kind of aligning herself to what's coming out of the governor's office. But, uh, I, my, my intent is I would like to see our businesses opened up in the safest way. And I also, again, want folks to follow the rule so as not to endanger that. I mean, it looks like we'll be pretty close to, I can go get a haircut again and that's been a while. So, so that's my, my take on this. So, I guess Jim, we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Very good.
Unless, unless we have to do a, an emergency, in which case, we will deal with that. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for the folks. All right, at this point, uh, we will go to the, well, I guess there's nothing on the consent calendar. Uh, I guess the informational reports, we had some inspection, building inspection, business license reports that are available for the public to look at. And there are no commissions, agencies, and authorities. And then now, item eight, city manager reports and recommendations.
Um, okay, um, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can't always tell. Um, you know, these, um, we had a meeting with the public health officer this morning to clarify, um, what her intentions are as to the governor's new pronouncements of last weekend. I believe that they came as some surprise on Sunday and it sort of leaves the health, the health officer sort of scrambling to follow and, and try to draft something in accordance with the governor's orders. Um, I know that she has had some frustration as, um, there's, uh, these, everything is moving very quickly and, um, she's, works with county council to do the best she can. And, uh, she's adamant that, uh, her rules are no more strict than the county, than the governor's even though she does have the freedom to do that. But she's actually been trying to be more accommodating and in terms of particularly the, the social bubbles and the household bubbles which are not allowed in other counties. Um, I think that, um, so this next order that should be coming out tomorrow is going to discuss the new rules regarding churches. They're allowing the twenty-five percent occupancy. Um, I wanted to let folks know that Chris Wilkes actually did visit the Calvary Church today in conjunction also with the building inspection we had there. And, uh, they reported that there was a good conversation and, uh, the information of what twenty-five percent occupancy was appreciated by the church. And so, um, we anticipate that that's, uh, gonna go well and that's a good thing. The, um, clothing stores, I've, um, had, uh, people call just to ask clarifying questions and, and I, uh, regarding racks on sidewalks and things like that. Those are allowed according to what I've heard and what the county hotline had said. Um, we did get a question about tanning beds and I put out, uh, that question to our health officer but she has not responded. I think they're really struggling with that one. Um, the order coming out tomorrow is going to allow hair salons to open. However, that's going to require mandatory face coverings for, and, uh, for both clients and the stylists. And you're not gonna be able to, to, because of the masks, you can't do anything face related like facials. Um, also, the nail salons will reme- Um, also, the nail salons will remain closed. The, um, you know, I wanted to talk about this, getting out the information. So what we are doing is when we get information about the new orders, we post them, uh, on our website, we post them on Facebook. And that is the same thing that the county is doing and the other cities are doing. Uh, the county is not translating as to our understanding that, um, something that takes some time and it's expensive and by the time we have it translated, frankly, we'd probably get a new order. So that's tough. Um, I'm just being realistic here. Uh, we have over thirteen hundred business licenses in the city of Willets. And so, getting personal notice as to the change of the orders is, is not something any city does at this time in Minnesota County that I'm aware of. And it's not something that we would have the capacity to do. If we were to do a mass mailing, um, that would take quite a bit of time. Again, by the time we were to do it, if we had the staff to do it, we'd probably have a new order. Um, so what we do is we put it on Facebook, we put it on our website. Um, the West Company has been great about putting out county orders as well and Chamber of Commerce has, as well. Uh, we also try to post new orders on the doors to City Hall for people walking by so they have that, uh, resource. Um, we don't really have the resources to do any more than that and I don't think that other organizations are, other cities are, are doing more than that. If not, I'd, I'd love to know. I do know that we are, um, by far, um, the shortest staffed and, and our, uh, you know, our, our general fund is about half, it's actually less than half of that of Fort Bragg's. We just don't have, um, I mean, just getting out a water bill is hard for us, so a, a mass mailing is tough. So if you have, uh, ideas that don't require staff time or resources or finances, um, would love to know them, but I think that we're sort of doing what the county's doing and, and everything we can. Um, but always, uh, always love to hear suggestions, so. Um, I do answer, I do get phone calls from the public and I've talked to business owners and tried to help business owners into compliance. Um, we've had, um, with the opening of businesses this weekend, we've actually had, it was really smooth. Um, people seemed to be really happy with that. I walked around quite a bit this weekend to see what people were doing and it just seemed to be going really well. There's not a lot of shopping going on yet, but, um, it was nice to see those doors open. We, um, and I, and I do think that the, the ordinance that we were talking about is not aimed at businesses as much as it is for mass gatherings that could be, present a danger. So, um, you know, that's something we should definitely look at. It's the, it's the mass gatherings, um, that are unlawful and that could cause harm. So I'm glad we'll be thinking about that for, for another two weeks. Um, the other thing, uh, we just learned, we have, we are now, Minnesota County is up to twenty-five cases. The new cases are in our particular region. Um, so we have eight cases in the, the Willets-Covelo region and, uh, that was, that information just recently came out. Uh, we should, we are told by the health officer that we should expect that, you know, as things further loosen, there will be, you know, more cases, so it's important to stay vigilant. Um, I know that a lot of us are sort of forgetting to wear masks and, um, socially distance and it's hard, it's just hard and, and so it's, um, but I have seen folks in Willets be incredibly kind to one another, um, and so that's been a very positive thing. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I can certainly answer those.
Questions with Stephanie?
I have one. This is Greta. Yes, um, thank you for, um, the update, uh, related to the COVID, uh, health crisis. Um, I, I do appreciate the efforts that the city has made to share the information. I understand how short-staffed you are and how difficult it is to do a major education campaign. Um, I feel like, um, you're in the same boat as so many of the, um, people in our community, whether they're business owners or members of the general public. There's so much information coming at us that's changing so quickly, it's really hard to stay on top of. So, um, the, the efforts that you have made, um, are appreciated. Um, I'm also wondering if, um, and I know your time is, um, very taxed right now with all the extra hours you're putting in to cover these, this particular crisis. I'm wondering if in future meetings, we will get back to a, um, uh, update from the city manager, um, for city business not related to the COVID, um, public health crisis. Um, it would be nice just to get, you know, we used to get your, your monthly newsletters. Um, it would be nice just to kind of hear, you know, how is engineering doing? How is the water department doing? What projects do they have going on? What's happening around the city? That's really helpful information for us to be able to share with the public. It's so good to let the public know that despite all of this, business is still humming in Willets, um, as far as our city infrastructure goes and to be able to share that information is invaluable. So an update would, would, I would, I personally would really appreciate it.
Um, I would love to do that. You know, I really enjoy the newsletters. I think they're fun and informative and we were, uh, I think we were doing them once a month. Um, I'm just, uh, so we've been trying to get, you know, staff to come to these telephonic meetings to give you updates because I'm, I feel, I'm sort of overwhelmed, but I'm gonna try. I'm gonna, uh, do everything I can to try to put something out in writing, just so departments can sort of put in their two cents because they are doing a lot. And, um, it's, it's sort of, we all sort of feel like crisis right now. Um, but the, um, but I would love to, to put out, I was actually gonna, I was actually tried about three times and had, you know, my little Snoopy with a typewriter, I was trying to find a, Doris was trying to find the little picture of him with a mask on so that I could put out exactly that. Um, I appreciate that. I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna try, um.
Thank you.
But, at that, at the point that we have, I guess we can move to item B?
Um, yes. I have, um, Todd McMahon is going to, um, is the project manager of our, uh, conservation easement project. And I don't, and he was trying to get on the line and I was emailing him back and forth because he got on the line and then he said he couldn't hear anything. And so I sent him the information over and I'm wondering, Todd, are you there?
Yes.
Ah, he made it, okay. So Todd McMahon is here with NCRM and here to give a, an update on our conservation easement, uh, project. There will be a written report coming in the future, but it's a, it's a lot of dense information, so I thought it'd be great. So, um, he's here to just answer questions and tell you where he is so far.
Thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, yeah, so Stephanie asked me to provide an update. Apparently there was a question at the last meeting and, and so we've been moving along again as a refresher. This project was to, we're looking potentially putting an easement on the watershed where we would, uh, bundle up a bunch of the rights that exist on easement and rights that the city more than likely doesn't not want to exercise and try to sell those rights to a conservation group, um, to prevent future development, overharvesting, et cetera. And so, uh, there were five phases in this project. We contracted with the city to, to tackle the first two phases and the first two phases were to, uh, first go in and research what are the high conservation values that would interest the conservation group on the watershed. Um, and we've done that and the second part of that was to then go in and look at what are the development, uh, rights that exist on the watershed. And, uh, so we went through a big permitting exercise, researched what the zoning is and what the allowable uses are. And so we have all this, this material from these first two phases compiled in a report. It's in draft form right now, I'm just waiting for a few more maps. And hopefully in the next couple weeks, I'll be sharing that with the, with the staff first for comment and then ultimately to the council. Um, the, the summary of what we found is that there are twenty-five parcels, um, on the watershed and, uh, through different zoning types. Um, all of them have, uh, different allowable uses. Uh, what's important in the conservation world though and, and the ability to preclude development is that, um, all of them have at the minimum the ability to put one residential development on each parcel. So potentially, if the city wanted to, and I'm not proposing that, but the city could sell twenty-five home sites across the watershed. So that will generate, uh, a reasonable amount of potential value that we could then sell to preclude that. Um, the, uh, the, the next step in this first phase, one and two, that we were gonna tackle after the report is reaching out to conservation groups, uh, to make sure that we align ourselves based on the conservation values that the city wants to retain and, uh, the values that exist on the property, um, and finding that ideal group that will sort of carry us through these next two phases. Um, the, the unfortunate thing that is going on right now in the COVID world is that, um, philanthropy was really dried up and conservation groups are in pretty desperate shape at the moment. Not a lot of funding is coming in, government resources are getting reallocated that fund a lot of these kind of things. And so, but we're gonna get this report done and then we're probably gonna need to sit on it for a minimum of a couple, two or three months until the economy engages again and, um, and people are interested in putting money forward for a project like this. So, so that's kind of the high level summary of where we're at. Uh, welcome any questions you may have. Any questions, anybody? Or anybody from the public?
This is Greta. I just wanted to say thank you. I was really curious to know where this was going. Um, makes sense that we're gonna have to, uh, kind of sit on this for a minute or two, but I appreciate knowing what's been done so far and that it's, um, still something that, uh, is moving forward. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Ready from the public? You know what, uh, if nobody else speaking, then I'll just say thank you and I really appreciate your due diligence and making sure all the, uh, i's are dotted and t's are crossed for something like this. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alright, I guess at this point, we are, D verbal reports. Stephanie?
Um, I have no, nothing to add.
Okay, you, uh, you did volunteer, were there at the, uh, COVID testing, weren't you?
Um, yes, I was, um, actually, thank you for reminding me. Actually, I do have a few things. I don't know whether Cannon is on the line tonight. Um, if he is not, I did want to give an update regarding the skate park. Um, we, Cannon has been working really hard to find, um, a way to open the skate park and we have some volunteers that stepped forward and it's been hard because, uh, anyone who volunteers with children, who works with the, with the city need, they need some background checking. And so we have some people that have stepped forward kindly and we're trying to do some background checking for them. Um, we also have a gentleman that we believe is, may have already be qualified and we are really trying to figure out a way to get this skate park open. I know we get a lot of calls about it and, uh, we've, you know, talked to, uh, UKIA, they have a full-time staff person monitoring. Um, and, you know, obviously we can't do that, but I'm, I'm really grateful for the people who have stepped forward and he's trying really hard to, to, to move a way forward. Um, we did COVID testing, we did, uh, surveillance testing, uh, twice. We did one last week, we did one this week and, uh, we must have tested over three hundred people and that was, it was very successful. Most of the folks were from Willets and Brick Trails. We did have a few people from places like Leggett and, and surrounding areas and it was nice to be able to meet them and tell them, you know, we just want people to get tested, get baselines and, and try to allege their, relay their fears about testing and, and we just, the more numbers we get, the more good numbers we get, the more that we can reopen and, um, the more people are, uh, becoming less fearful, the more testing people are asking for. You know, I got people that I, I, to be able to, to, to volunteer for testing that would not have a few weeks ago, so that was wonderful. Um, the county's testing site is open. It is in UKIA at the fairgrounds and they are anxious for people to come and take tests, so please encourage everyone that you know to go get a test and so we get, the more data we have, the better. And, um, I want to let the other department heads, uh, speak to the things that they're, that they're working on right now. Thank you.
Uh, Stephanie, regarding the testing, do you need to call for an appointment or do you, uh, will they take walk-in?
My understanding is the UKIA center, you do need to make an appointment and you can do it online. And, um, while it is free, if you do have insurance, they will want to see your insurance information and charge insurance if they can, but if you don't have insurance, it's, it's okay, they'll, it's, it's free.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Madge, can I make a comment or a question? Yeah. Yeah, um, I have done, I've done a little bit of research to find out about the possibility of testing the sewage influx for, uh, you know, for traces of, of COVID-19 and, um, got a little bit of information from the Humboldt County Environmental Health people. Um, there used to be a kind of a, a promotion of the testing where you got a really good deal and Lake County got in on that, uh, but it's now cost twelve hundred dollars. Uh, I have a friend who, uh, is, was a, was a public health nurse, she's retired, but she offered, it's now twelve hundred dollars for a single test of the, um, sewage influx and she offered to pay for that if the city would go ahead and do it. Uh, and I probably could get two or three people to share the cost. I know anything that costs that much, um, is a, a bit of a budget strain for us. Uh, but I think the idea of having a baseline or at least a point in time test of our sewage influx, um, in the words, uh, would be really helpful to just know if there's, because the testing is, it's a helpful in the right direction, but we're certainly not reaching anywhere near, um, a majority of all the people that live here. So I wanted to put that on the, uh, on our consideration, either now through this, the city manager's own decision-making or if we need to put it on a future agenda.
Well, that's fair enough, your friend, Madge. Uh, if you have anything you want to have on?
I, I, I mean, I can talk to Scott if, if your friends want to meet up with, with Scott, who's our, um, wastewater superintendent regarding that. I, I, I can do that if the council so wishes.
I'm game, it's, it's not gonna cost anything and Madge has figured out a way and Scott's okay with it. That's Jerry, one person.
It would, it would involve a little, uh, a little staff time because they would have to take the measurements and, you know, model up the samples or whatever it is they do and send them off to get tested and it would take about two weeks to get the results.
This is Sabrina. Didn't, didn't we recently, I think it was, uh, a month ago, have something in regards to sewage tests, sewage testing that we could apply to this situation that, that the council approved?
Um, yes, we, approximately two months ago, it was offered to us by Stanford and this was actually in one of my, uh, Rice Weekly reports that I sent to y'all. And what happened is Stanford withdrew the offer and instead decided to test another rural city nearby. We also investigated, uh, Lakeport, uh, had another university do theirs. Um, they also denied ours. We didn't fit within their criteria, so we get, uh, we have no options for sewer testing at this time.
And it's my understanding, Lakeport's paying now at this point when they do it, so.
With us?
It's my understanding, Lakeport is now paying to get it done at this point. I don't, I think the days of prebeads are gone.
Yeah, and they were doing it through MIT and MIT wouldn't do ours.
It's a, uh, it's a private testing company that is offering this at twelve hundred a pop, so.
If, if council is still, still game, um, I would, uh, talk to, to Scott. I'm sure Scott would be willing to help as long as it's not two-time intensive, um, would help with the process. And if, if council's still game, I can, um, hook you with, uh, with Scott to, to make that happen.
Great. Okay. I support it. That's just Sabrina.
Alright. I think you got three.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, uh, at this point, I guess we'll go to department, uh, recommendation and, uh, you know what, how about we get Dusty out of the way because he's got a, uh, KFN contract? We'll start with him.
Uh, thank you, Mary Gonzalez. Good evening, councilmembers. Dusty Dooley, Community Development.
Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director. Uh, once again, we've got a, a request to approve a contract, uh, this time with the group, uh, consulting group, KSN, to help the city develop a flood emergency response plan and associated training. Uh, the council may recall that the, the city was awarded a competitive grant for $196,000 to fund, uh, both the flood emergency response plan efforts as well as yet another unfunded state mandate to complete dam inundation. Uh, um, this, uh, contract is to assist with just the, the flood emergency response plan portion of the, of the grant. Uh, we did initiate a competitive process and KSN was chosen, uh, as the highest scoring and most qualified consulting group to assist us with this project. Um, and then, um, I do want to make note of one suggested change to the actual contract that you have in front of you and it's under item number 15A, the whole harmless. The, the last sentence under, uh, section 15A, it says, "In no event shall the cost to defend charged to the contractor exceed the contractor's proportionate percentage of fault." Uh, and staff would, uh, recommend that we insert the word, um, percentage of the cost so that that sentence would then read, "In no event shall the percentage of the cost to defend charged to the contractor exceed the contractor's proportionate percentage of fault." Um, and with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have. Thank you.
And, uh, Jim, this is Jerry. If you have a chance to review this and you concur with, I'd please.
Yes, I concur with, with the change that Dusty's recommending. And so does Suprema. Uh, excuse me, Stephanie.
At this point, I'll, if Suprema, you want to add anything or ask any questions?
Just a clarifying question that this is fully funded under the grant.
Uh, I'm happy to say that it's fully grant-funded and other than, uh, city staff time, there, there is no fiscal cost to the city and it was included, uh, in our, in our budget. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you and good job on the grant.
Thank you. Thanks, councilman.
Does anybody?
Dusty, did you have anything else to report on?
Uh, I do. Uh, not, not on this specific item unless the council had further questions.
I kind of wanted to finish this first, so did.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have anything on this?
I have no questions on this. Thank you. Thank you, Dusty.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I'm just going to leave it unmuted. Um, I just wanted to clarify that the map that's included, uh, in the contractor's, um, proposal is of Colinga, oh, Tachila. So, uh, that was just an illustrative map, I'm assuming, because it's just. Is that right?
Uh, yes. Uh, the, the group noticed that as well and, uh, that's just a, a map that they chose to put on the front cover in their presentation to the city of Willets and, um, it, it, it's, yeah.
So, it illustrates what, what it will look like when the map is actually Willets. Okay. That's what I thought.
I agree. It wasn't the greatest choice of, uh, of a cover page, but.
Okay. All right. Larry, do you have anything you want to add or?
I do not.
Okay. And actually, Dusty, yeah, thank you. The great on the grant and all of that. I'm, I'm, uh, really glad we can move forward on this. This will make things easier for, for folks on the field.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the council, for the support and for the wise decisions that allowed us to, to take on that project. Yep. Thank you.
All right. At this point, does anybody from the public like to ask Dusty any questions regarding this? Okay. At this point, I'll bring it back up to us and I'll see if I have a motion on this.
Hold of approval. This is Madge. A second. This is Greta.
Okay. Moved and seconded, moved by Madge, seconded by Greta. Any further discussion? Okay. Well, I'll call for the vote. Kathy?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you. All right. At this point, Dusty, do you have anything else?
Uh, yeah, a few things. Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Um, so just first off, I just want to start by, uh, reminding the council and the public that the Community Development Department continues to be open and, and available to, uh, process, uh, building permits, complete building inspections, uh, review, uh, planning related permits, business license, et cetera. So, uh, services haven't been interrupted, uh, due to the COVID-19, uh, situation, although, uh, the way that we interact with the public and review information and receive information, we have had to adapt to our, our regular practices. Um, but just so that the public's aware, uh, we, we are available, um, uh, to help with, with any types of projects or questions that folks have. Um, uh, let's see here. The, uh, staffs continue to work with the California Conservation Corps, uh, on the development of, of their campus project. Um, again, this is a project that, um, consists of 64,000 square feet of, of new building. Uh, it's, uh, expected that 120, um, uh, permanent corps members, uh, will be, uh, become part of our community and be living on that campus as well as associated staff. Um, even 150 people is a 3% increase to, to our population, so, uh, this is certainly an, an exciting, uh, project for, for the city. Um, the, uh, another little neat fact is that it, it's actually going to be a zero-net energy development, meaning, uh, all the anticipated energy used from that facility will be offset by, uh, renewable energy, uh, systems onsite, um, primarily solar panels. Um, the, uh, construction's expected to, to really commence in 2021 and the campus is expected to be, uh, completed and fully operational in 2000, 2023. Um, so staff's been, um, glad to be working with the state on, on that project. Um, speaking of, of renewable energy systems, uh, the council may be aware that, uh, staff received another competitive, or the city received another competitive grant to upgrade the solar system on City Hall. Um, yet to, uh, fully understand what that cost savings is going to be, uh, yet, um, but certainly will, will keep the council updated. At this point, we're just moving into the design phase and then we'll be, um, coming before the council to, um, to get permission to put an RFP out for that project as well. Uh, we're also meeting with, um, Tesla next week. Uh, they have some, um, um, some potential funds available, uh, for some, uh, battery systems that would further offset, uh, energy costs for a variety of city facilities. So, we're going to, uh, we're continuing to explore, um, those types of, of opportunities to, to recognize some cost savings, um, uh, for the city. Um, let's see here. Uh, the, um.
A question about that?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. Um, didn't we get from PGE, uh, because they were designating us as a site in the event of PSPS, um, whatever, you know, it's, or, you know, disaster, um, area. I'm sorry. My, my brain just going to. Were they going to upgrade or provide batteries for free for the city hall?
Um, I can answer that. This is Stephanie. Uh, they are actually going to be, um, providing a large generator, but not batteries.
Oh.
And so, that generator is going to be able to cover the entire city hall in, well, actually, it, it's actually the, the community center and possibly part of city hall in the event of a PSPS, um, so they could be a community resource center. And they've already signed the agreement and, uh, when, when they use it as a PSPS, they'll even be giving us $500 a day plus supplying us with the generator.
Okay. But we can't make use of, um, the solar in, in addition to or in collaboration with the generator? I mean, it would be nice if we had the battery capacity to, to use of the solar as well. Okay.
I, I agree. I.
Yeah.
Dusty, I'm going to let you answer that.
No, I was just going to point out that it, it may be that the generator becomes a redundant energy source. Um, but there certainly is an opportunity, if it's an extended power outage, that the solar and battery system, um, you know, could, um, not have enough storage capacity where the, the use of the generator became necessary. So, uh, at this point, we sort of have a, a backup and a backup to the backup plan. So, um, hopefully we'll be well-prepared for any future PSPS events. But, but the, um, alternative energy system on City Hall will continue to provide ongoing cost savings to the, uh, to the city regardless of, of a PSPS event. So, uh, the benefit's beyond just dealing with one of those types of events.
Hey, Dusty, this is Jerry. Um, question for you. Have we had any, and you don't have to name them if you have, but any local businesses reaching out regarding, uh, just that things opening up from COVID and orders, asking questions? Is it fair? Are you guys in a position to provide guidance there? Have you had anybody to check you?
Um, it, it's possible that they've been reaching out to some of my colleagues, but, um, I've only received a couple of calls myself, uh, and it's, um, they're both from local businesses that are looking to establish outdoor seating. Um, and, um, uh, Stephanie, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions with Dusty? Otherwise, I'll move on.
I, I just wanted to report a couple of other things here. We, if that's okay, Mayor?
Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Uh, I, I don't know if the council is aware, but the cannabis tax reported for the first quarter in 2020 was, uh, just over $80,000. Um, and we're also continuing to receive, um, interest from new applicants and expecting new applications to come in as soon as next week. Um, we are, our effort to reach out to experienced housing developers and, and secure their interest in developing appropriate housing and projects in Willets, uh, is continuing to lead to discussions with, uh, experienced developers. Uh, we were able to send off to a, a response to a, a well-known group, uh, earlier this week and let them know about, um, some opportunities in Willets as well as some projects that we're currently processing related to housing. Um, let's see here. Uh, some of this, I'll just, I'll probably not mention, but, uh, you know, just, uh, just to let you know, uh, staff is in, is participating and meeting with the county with updating our multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and are expecting to finish up that process by the end of the year. This is, uh, an extremely important document, uh, to get completed, uh, as it allows the city to remain eligible for obtaining, uh, both post-disaster and pre-planning funds from FEMA, uh, for any type of, of major disaster. Uh, and so we've been, uh, spending a good amount of time working on that project as well. Um, and then finally, I just, uh, just a friendly reminder to everyone that we're getting into fire season and it's, uh, it's gotten to the time where it's very important to keep your, uh, your, your grass mowed, uh, so that you don't create a fire danger to yourself or, or to others. Um, and if, if you, uh, have, uh, a, a reason why you can't do that yourself, um, please, please contact the Community Development Department and, and we can help either direct you towards resources of folks that can help you with that or if there's a, a financial hardship, um, we'll try to, uh, link you up with, um, you know, a, a good Samaritan within the community. Um, uh, otherwise, expect to get a, a letter from, uh, from the Community Development Department and the, uh, Fire Department, uh, letting you know you got a limited time to, to comply with that. Um, and, uh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dusty. I was going to ask about that.
Ah, okay.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll move on. Okay.
This is Suprema.
Go ahead.
This is, this is Suprema. Just a quick comment on, uh, I believe it's South Maple Street. Uh, we had that project with the new pump station going in and they had stopped doing work and I see that they resumed work, which is wonderful, uh, but I don't know who's responsible for the, for the grass there. We're, the grass is right around five, six feet tall, so just wanted to throw that out. Not expecting an answer, just making you aware.
We can hit that. I can, I'm going to tell, uh, Public Works and we can hit that. That's usually our responsibility. Thank you.
All right. All right. Uh, do you have anybody from engineering tonight? Hi, anybody from Public Works?
Yeah, I think engineering is, uh, is actually there waiting for one of our closed-session items and preparing for that.
All right. And do I have anybody from Public Safety?
Um. Hello?
Go ahead.
Um, yes, our chief is out of the office this week. He went to, um, to go pick up ballistic helmets and do some other, uh, errands and so he is, has not been, he is not here this week.
Oh, okay. Is our fire checking?
Danny, could I, uh, throw something out real quick?
All right.
It came to our, it came to our attention that, uh, or at least mine and, and another council was attention that the chief may have been part of something special in regards to your donation to our city and I think he mentioned it prior, but we didn't, I know for myself, I didn't fully understand. It was so brief in his report. If he could bring, if Stephanie, you could ask him to bring that back before council so that we could fully understand what that was and properly thank whoever, uh, thanks is due to, that would be appreciated.
Um, well, certainly. What he reported was that he received a donation from the Los Angeles Police Department of $40,000 worth of ballistic helmets for our officers and, um, I, I wish that he could come in person and show it to you, but he's, unfortunately, we can't do that. Um, but he's actually, uh, on his trip to Los Angeles, uh, this week. That's what, are the things that he's doing is picking up those helmets, but he can certainly speak more to that, but it's, it was a very generous donation and, uh, I was going to be writing a letter to the Los Angeles Police Department to thank them.
That's wonderful. Maybe the chief can put something on the, uh, this, the city and the police department's page and then even if he just sent us a newsletter with a picture of what it is since we can't see it in person, that would be helpful. It sounds like a, a fairly sizable donation. I want to make sure we thank him properly and thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. And Kathy, do you have anything?
Yes. Quickly, I just wanted to add along with Dusty that even though City Hall is closed for people just coming in, we are open. We are still working. We encourage the community, you know, if you've got anything to drop off, water payments, uh, building permits, such as those kinds of things, to put it in the drop box. You can pay your water bill online or you can call us. Our number is on the front door and we will come out and take your payment. Um, so I just, I just wanted to remind the community of that and also report that if you haven't been to the airport lately, go by. There's quite a few planes parked up there. I was up there last night as Ukiah is redoing their runway, which we hope that we'll, we will get to do, um, a little bit later this summer. Uh, we have a lot of their planes up here and it's quite a sight to go see some of them. So, if you get a chance, go up. Thank you.
All right. And, uh, do you have any resources? Do you have anything?
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Looks like, uh, at this point, um, and actually, I love the lines of Suprema, so when I talked to the chief, I, I thought it would be nice to send a letter from the council thanking the Los Angeles Police Department. Uh, that would be, uh, a nice gesture on our part of the council, but it'd be nice to see, again, what, what he got, so. Certainly. City Council Committee, Airtime.
Uh, excuse me, mayor. This is Jim Lance. I had a recommendation I wanted to make if I could.
Oh, sorry, Jim. I apologize.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
I, I was going to recommend that, um, in a future agenda, that we consider, uh, a code of ethics policy for the city council members. It's very common, uh, practice among public agencies that their boards or, or councils, uh, enter into a, a, a code of ethics where they sign a pledge and agreeing to adhere to it. I think it would be good for maintaining or improving public confidence and reminding council members about what kind of activity is acceptable and expected and what is not. And, uh, I talked with, uh, Dusty, uh, a lot about this last summer and we both researched several different cities' codes of ethics and, and I think we both liked the one from the city of Sunnydale. And if there's council support for that, uh, I would, uh, I would have that on your next agenda. And if there's council support for that, I would have that on your next agenda.
Okay. I would support it, but I guess I'll check with my fellow council members. Will I have support for this?
I would support it. I'd like to see what the wording is, but that's a good idea.
I would support it, very.
Okay. So I think we've got it. Go ahead. Are you saying you would support it or?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You know, Jeff, I, even if it doesn't come back to our next meeting, but the meeting after that, I'm not sure what we'll have going, but we have a chance to review it.
That would be nice. Very good.
I have a question for, can I have a question for Stephanie? Yeah, this is Madge. I just realized you didn't mention budget, that we're almost in June. Are we going to defer adopting a budget for beyond the June 30th deadline?
I believe that Andy is on the line. I've just been texting him. Hello?
I am on the line, yes.
Yes, and he is preparing, he's starting to prepare the budget now, but I'm going to let him speak to that.
Andy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Andy is a financial consultant to the city. We've actually gone through and familiarized myself. I've been to the city about three times already and I will be there tomorrow. I've gone through the budget, familiarized myself with your format and kind of what it looks like. And one of the things that I'll be doing tomorrow is reaching out to all the department heads to really look at what their base budgets look like so that we can put a base budget together. Given the onset of the COVID-19 crisis, I think what will come before you, and also given the time that it's going to take to get a budget before you, before the end of June, what will come before you will likely be a very base budget and address the departmental concerns and some of the things that the departments need from a base perspective. And then ultimately, a couple of months after that, as we have more information related to the total impacts of the revenue, on the revenue of the COVID crisis, actually come back to you and update that budget in a similar fashion. But the goal is to put something before you, before the end of the month of June for you to consider, kind of go through that. One thing that I did discuss with the city manager is that to the extent, you know, there are individual council members that would like to come in and meet with me to discuss budget format, et cetera, I think that that's completely open and I personally would encourage that. That way, I'm meeting your needs as well. So that's kind of where it's at, but it's in process. And again, the goal is to get something before you before the end of June.
Andy, this is Jerry Gonzalez. Now, I'm assuming that a lot of agencies are doing exactly what you just talked about. A lot of cities are doing that, is that correct?
That's correct. What a lot of cities you'll find are doing are adopting what's called a continuing resolution, where a continuing resolution is put in place to essentially continue your existing year budget. So it's continuing the 1920 budget with the appropriate appropriation authority leading into next year. That would require a resolution of the city council. At this point in time, I'm really not recommending that we do that. And over the course of the next couple of weeks, I want to see how much I can get done to at least put something, some sort of a base budget in front of you for consideration. Ultimately, if that proves very difficult and information is just super hard to come by, which I don't think it will be, you know, we may be recommending a continuing resolution, but that is not the goal right now.
Any other questions of Mr. Heath from the council? Okay, Dusty, thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to working with you.
And I wanted to jump in. We did have one sort of exciting piece of news on the finance front and that is we are, have somebody in background to be working in our finance department to be assisting Andy.
Good. I would like to meet with him when it's convenient, so have input. Thank you.
All right. If there were a council member reports and recommendations, I'll start with Suprina. Suprina, do you want to add anything, say anything? I can, Suprina. Okay, Greta, is there anything you'd like to report on?
None of my committees have met since the last meeting. I don't know if Caltrans Ad Hoc Committee exists anymore since we approved the relinquishment, so I may need a new assignment. I have been meeting every Thursday with a group that Mo Mulherin gathered together. Essentially, it's a business impact meeting with Jason Lyles from Senator McGuire's office. Stephanie has been on the last two of those. Those are very helpful, lots of good information. I did want to point out in reference to something Dusty said earlier regarding businesses who have reached out to his department looking to increase outdoor seating opportunities, restaurants. The Community Foundation of Mendocino County is putting together or offering resiliency micro grants specifically for Mendocino County businesses impacted by COVID who are working to pivot or retool their businesses. These would be small, like five thousand dollar grants, but that might be a perfect thing for, say, a restaurant looking to build out to have more outside seating. So I don't, it's not necessarily the city's job to refer business to owners to grant opportunities, but that would be a good thing to let any of these businesses who are coming to the city asking for, you know, input, that that is available. I also wanted to ask that maybe we could make some kind of announcement about the election filing period, as this is an election year. I did have a gentleman approach me today wanting to know how he could run for city council. So I know it's early, but it'd be a good idea to kind of get some information out there to the public who may be interested in running for a seat.
Hi, Greta, this is Stephanie. If you have information on that micro grant program, if you could send it to me, I can put it on our website and on, anytime I get information regarding small business grants or loans, I put it on the website and on our Facebook page, so I'd love to publicize that. Thank you.
All right. Madge, do you have anything?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes.
All right.
Okay, so I believe I already reported that E D F C was close to hiring a new general manager or executive director. That's been postponed a little bit, but we also did approve a couple of fairly big loans and that's really good news because they had a lot of money just sitting there not generating either business or income because they want to have loans out and have the interest income basically recycled so that they can keep earning more. So that was really good on the E D F C front and we'll be meeting again relatively soon, but I think right after our next city council meeting. And meanwhile, I did want to announce regarding Mendo Recycle, the solid waste management, we have a, we are starting up more hazardous household waste disposal options. For a while, we restricted those quite a bit, but they, and then they were only available in Ukiah. But starting June 13th, Saturday, June 13th, we will have another collection of hazardous household and commercial waste that day, started June 13th at the city's facility, 380 East Commercial Street, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's free for households and that includes things like paint, batteries, tires, also, I'm not sure it includes tires, but various hazardous household waste that you're not allowed to put in your regular garbage. And it's also available for commercials that they have to, they have to kind of reserve in advance. So if anyone wants more information, they can go to mendorecycle.org, mendorecycle.org or phone 468-9710. But this is the first time since the lockdown that we've had an opportunity for hazardous waste disposal here in Willets. I'm glad that we're able to offer that again.
Thank you, Madge. Larry, do you have anything?
Yes, I had a person in the community ask me about the fair being canceled and about what about the large animals that were normally just auctioned off at the fair and that is not going to be able to happen. And the young people that have put out the money for these large stairs and whatever need a place to be able to sell them off. And so I reached out to Senator McGuire and he returned my call today. And by this time, the Fair Board had met on the day before and is going to do it by internet. And so that answered that question. But I did have a little time to talk to Senator McGuire and he's very interested in our community. And we talked about what it was going to look like after the virus is over and we can start back up with our businesses and things. And I thought it was very interesting and he asked me some questions about how I thought that it was going to do. And I said, well, it's going to be really thin getting going but that I thought that we would have enough good businesses to carry on and make our community go. And so it was a very interesting talk about that. Also, Jerry, did you go to the mental health here or did you hear it today? Are you going to report on that?
Yeah, I was going to report on that.
I have a question. Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Again, Mayor's going to cover my meeting at City's road meeting on Friday, but that normally would have that. And then it hasn't met, but we'll be meeting the first Monday in June, which will be last go. And today I listened to the measure B meeting. And Larry, did you have a question that I could answer? Because for the most part, they...
I got a call, I got a call from some neighbors up at the, around the hospital, the old Howard Hospital, that Jed Diamond was out there taking pictures and stuff of how founded in the old hospital. Was there anything that came up at the meeting like that?
No, nothing regarding the, I guess, they did talk about that they're almost finished with their report on the different facilities, but they weren't ready to report out on that. And there was something else that a balloon was, but I don't think it was related to the old hospital or a program that was pulled. For the most part, they gave a budget update. They have fifteen million plus in the kitty. And they had a discussion regarding, I guess, what direction to go, whether they need a strategic plan. There was some conversation there about which direction, whether to take on some of these community roles, et cetera, or proceed with building. And they also discussed a future budget. Shannon Riley from Ukiah had talked about that. And that was the extent of it. I don't know whether, other than they're going to try and have an ad hoc for a budget. And I guess they spoke about possibility that there were a lot of unknowns depending on which way they go as far as buildings, but they weren't quite ready there that that would make the budget process. But they said they do have some knowns and those would be their director's budget, their director's salary and some ongoing expenses they do have. So they were going to work on a budget. So that's all I have today.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, this is Larry again. So there was nothing, no reason for Jeb Diamond to be up in that area taking pictures? That you know?
Not that they discussed in the meeting. That they didn't say that, you know, comes later, but they didn't openly discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody else have another question?
Yeah, Jerry, this is Suprina. My call was dropped and I had to dial back in, so I missed when you first called my name. I apologize. I do want to report on M T A if this is a good time.
Go ahead.
Okay. So M T A met today, we had a meeting at 1:30 and we talked about our service performance report, our financials. M T A is receiving funding from the CARES, federal funding from the CARES Act. And then we talked about our operating budget and what it looks like as M T A begins the reopening plan. So there was a lot that affected our community. Just to give people out there an idea, M T A saw a seventy thousand dollar reduction so far in the weeks that we've been under the tip water in fare loss and has spent about an additional twenty-three, twenty-four thousand on cleaning supplies and then P P E modifications for the buses and so forth and another eight thousand from furloughing employees. Some things that as we go to transition towards reopening, I just wanted to let people know what it might look like. We have bus route sixty-five and I think it's ninety-five. As long as you can travel outside Mendocino County, Mendocino Transit Authority will not be able to offer those services. So that restriction will stay in place even as we begin to open up if you can't, if we can't go outside the county. The other thing is that with the modification of lots of the buses, there are some good things that are going to stay on the buses. For example, in between seats and for drivers, there's things like sneeze guards and all kinds of things like that that are just going to make it much healthier and safer. And M T A purchased, I forget what the name of it is, but they essentially go on the bus and they spray it. That gives it a deep clean. And those are happening every time the bus comes back to the transit facility in Ukiah, which turns out to be often more than once a day they're able to do that with the buses. Just wanted to give that update. And then in terms of just regular council member reports, Dan Jurdie and I serve on M T A and he sent me something today and I ran it by Jim to make sure it was okay to bring this up in open session. The County of Mendocino had a meeting on May 5th. They gave a slide, a budget workshop presentation and Supervisor Jurdie sent me this, not for the purpose of showing me this particular slide. It just happened to be in and out that he was intentionally giving it to me or not giving it to me, but it caught my eye because when you get to slide number nine, they gave, it says directions for fiscal year 2021 and they lay out how they're going to reduce their budget from five percent cut to county contracts, a hiring freeze, department consolidations. They don't identify what they're going to close, but they say it's a five hundred thousand dollar savings. But it was the last item that caught my eye because it said Willet's Justice Center and it said surplus property sale for five hundred thousand. And so that seems like maybe this may be a time to reach out to the county or put this as an agenda item so that we can give direction. And maybe I'll let Jim take it from here.
Thank you, Suprina. Yes, Suprina and I discussed this today and what's interesting about this is presently the city has, is two years into a forty-year lease extension of occupying that property at one dollar a year. In 1987, the city and county entered into an agreement in which the county constructed the Justice Center on land owned by the city and then the county leased to the city the right to occupy five thousand square feet on the first floor of the police department. So for the first thirty years, the city paid thirty thousand dollars a year in rent. And then in January 2018, the lease was extended, like I said, for a forty-year period, a dollar a year. So if the... So if the, if the county, um, were to sell its justice center to some other third party, it would be subject to the city's right to remain there for 40 years. Whoever bought the property, in my view, would be obligated, just as the county is, to maintain it as a landlord for the city. Uh, the other thing that's interesting is that, to my knowledge, the city continues to own the, um, the land and have title to the land. And if justice center was sold, seems to me, I'm not sure if the lease addresses it, um, because I haven't read it recently, but uh, my understanding would be that the county cannot sell, uh, the land. And, uh, so if city and county jointly sold it to a third party, perhaps perhaps the, the improvement should be separately appraised from the value of the land, and, and agreement could be reached as to how those proceeds would be divided between the city and the county. Uh, so, that's something to think about. It's, um, perhaps the city has an interest in acquiring the property and, uh, and buying, buying the building from the county. And if the city were to, uh, discuss doing that, I would think we ought to have an appraisal done that determines what the value is, given the fact that the building is encumbered by a 40-year lease, and, uh, the county only has the improvement to sell. So, yeah, something to think about.
Um, this is Stephanie, uh, I believe I'm unneeded. Um, my concern about this building, this particular building, I, I'm guessing that they just threw a bunch of property into the hopper. I did ask John Hashak whether he had heard about this report, and he had not. Uh, he didn't know about this. Um, I think if, I'm guessing that they didn't do the research on the building and didn't realize that there was a 40-year encumbrance on it, or that they didn't own the land. Um, one thing that I have found and had discussed with, um, staff and the police department is that, um, the building has significant deferred maintenance, um, that right now the county is, as our landlord, even for a dollar, has a complete obligation to do the fixing on. And they've actually, although they're fairly slow in doing the repairs, they, they do the repairs. And so they keep the roof, uh, together, and we're actually getting an incredible value at a dollar a year. And, um, it is something that I certainly would not want to acquire, that liability of bringing that building, um, up to a standard, uh, that we cannot afford at this time. Just my two cents, I think that once they, once the county discovers encumbrances on this building, I think that it's gonna go away. The interest is gonna go away.
I, I think my, my preference, if I could, is to, to, to give direction, to, to start with an inquiry, um, and then go from there.
I'm not sure what would be, what, uh, may I have some a little bit more information on what we're, what you'd like staff to do?
I guess I'm coming from the standpoint of the fact that, uh, council has, in the past, uh, this, this subject matter had become before council. And, uh, I know in the past, um, I expressed, um, interest in the possibility of, of, um, that becoming the city property. Um, I know that the timing in terms of finances not, might not be great, but on the other hand, sometimes you have to seize the moment, and you never know what may become of it. I mean, although it's slated for a $500,000 expenditure, the city does know that it's also, um, they have reoccurring costs every, every year, so maybe there is some opportunity for negotiation, and maybe I guess direction could be, um, for, I guess, direction might be that, that, uh, we direct either city manager or the city attorney to, to look into that possibility for us.
This is Jerry. Um, I, I just would like to find out if this was just an oversight on their part at this point, um, just to get a better idea. And then have the city attorney come back and, uh, check with, check with us, or, or advise us, and then we can decide what we wanna do after that. I don't think I'd wanna pursue it at the, seriously, at the moment, given our budget concerns, but I, I would like to at least find out what, what's up. That's me.
Exactly. I, I wanna know more information about it and see if it is an opportunity for the city. It is a matter of public record, and for anybody who would like to find it, you can go to the County of Mendocino and look for the 2021 budget workshop presentation. It was a slide presentation at the May, this meeting.
Uh, okay, so I heard two different recommendations. Um, one recommendation is for staff to, uh, give a report on the pros and cons or the possibilities of buying this building, which would require, um, some staff time to evaluate the building and its condition and appraisal and that sort of thing. I heard from the mayor that he wants to know sort of what the county's intentions are, and are they aware of sort of the legal ramifications of that. So am I correct, and I'm hearing sort of two different things?
Um, this is the mayor. Yes, that's correct. I, I, I don't think I wanna take it too far at the moment till I find out if it's just them lumping a bunch of property together and, um, you know, at the moment, it's kinda like getting a good deal on a new car, but you can't afford a new car. Um, it might be a good deal, but that's the time I wanna know, you know, if they have a buyer in mind at the moment, or they just kinda flip out, and that's all I'm interested in.
Yeah, and, and I feel like where Jerry's going is where I think that's a good starting point. I'm not saying let's jump all in, but I would like to see us do some, some inquiry work.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing is you would like me to, or Jim, to just inquire if the county is serious about selling this and whether they're aware of the burdens on the property, which would just require a couple of phone calls, I'm guessing.
That, that's correct. That's what I would want. And I
I would
Okay. All right, so, let's have another, uh, council member report recommendations. Good welfare? Other than, I guess I wanna, Mitch, start off by saying that we've got a lot of graduates graduating in this weird time. Uh, college, Mendocino College graduate, and, uh, Willits High and, uh, Charter and, uh, San Adrian are graduating. So I'd like to just put it out there that I'd like to congratulate all the graduates and their parents and say sorry. It's a weird time. It is what it is. That's what I have at the moment. Um, Suprina?
No, I just
Anything?
Yeah, I just wanna echo that, that congratulations. I know we're not gonna have another meeting until afterwards. Uh, my daughter's graduating eighth grade, and although it's not a huge milestone, we are pretty excited and, uh, looking forward to, to celebrating those graduates as well.
All right, Greta, is there any good welfare?
Uh, sure. I just wanted to say there are several businesses downtown who are displaying photos of our graduates. So if you happen to be walking about getting a little bit of exercise, do look into the store windows, and you'll see the graduates that we are all so proud of in our community.
All right, thank you. Mitch, do you have any good welfare?
Um, I don't think so, no.
Larry, do you have anything?
Yes, I would like to congratulate all the, all the graduates this year, and, uh, I just think it's, it's a wonderful time of year. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so at this point, uh,
Mr. Mayor, would it, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
This, this is Jim Lance. Would it be possible for the city attorney to give some good welfare?
Go ahead, Jim.
I'm happy to say that, uh, two days ago, my second grandchild was born.
Yay!
Drew William Laird.
Congratulations.
Yeah, uh, eight months ago, my first grandchild, Billy, so now that, now Drew and Billy will be cousins only eight months apart, so we're really excited.
Well, you probably remember when they were born.
How exciting, Jim. Congrats.
Thank you.
Congratulations, grandpa.
Thank you.
All right. Um, at this point, we have closed session. Uh, we have conference with legal counsel pursuant government code 54956.9D, Coran 4, anticipated litigation. At this point, three cases. Uh, item B, conference with labor negotiations pursuant government code 5497.6, agency negotiations, negotiator Stephanie Sierra-Bran Fiera, city manager, and Karen Stevenson, Steven Resources, Alice, Employee Organization, Willis Police Officers Association, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. And item C, pursuant to government code 54957, public employee annual performance evaluation, city manager. And, at this point, um, how about we call it five minutes and then reconvene in closed session? If I have anything to report out, I will sign back in, cause Kathy, you can let me do that, is that correct? To the main body and, uh,
Yes.
Report out?
Yes, you can sign, sign back into this number.
All right, five-minute break, and then we'll be back in closed session.